Well, I'm glad they got it.
It's in Spokane and Bill Gates is gonna be there.
Some of their people, they're thinking, yeah.
That's exciting.
That was really exciting. Um, yeah, just go to s- to be with some. Oh, she's, there is some guy. She's Ernie, you couldn't make that more complicated. And, well, I think he's like you. I'm like.
Right.
So I was talking to this guy.
I think the woman's name was Brad. Yeah, now we some.
Made this thing so you don't have as much stub on your.
Yeah, it's too bad because you can't see it.
You gotta know how to get it.
Yeah, he couldn't for life. He was like, yeah, oh, that's it. No, it's not me. Yeah.
I probably should have taken just last name.
Well, no, no. It's like, could you imagine me just like, just wander off like, like, I'm not Russian, sorry, I can't take a traditional. If it looks like, I just, I couldn't.
No, yours is not the right one.
It's not the right one?
If I, I've been, maybe I would have changed my off, but I mean.
Well, same as the school tax, right? School tax. Well, hey, you mess with the wrong number and it's too much.
Tell us it's offered being new for a galaxy. So if I get reelected, I might, I might have been get that.
Waiting all that time and then at the last second, you realize you're out of battery. I'd like to call this meeting to order.
You're not there. I know. You missed it, counselor.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to begin this evening's meeting with our Aboriginal acknowledgement. The city of Nelson acknowledges all Aboriginal peoples on whose traditional territories we stand. We honor their connection to the land and rivers and respect the importance of the environment to our strength as a community. Are there any late items? No late items? Um, we're gonna start tonight with, uh, some appreciation for the girls under eighteen soccer team here in Nelson, who won gold at the provincial championships. So a huge. I'd like to invite, uh, I'd like to invite the team members up to have a picture with the mayor perhaps?
Yeah.
Come on up.
And maybe we could talk a little bit about this because it's really, and Chief Burkhart, would you please come up?
Yes, Chief Burkhart is the coach.
He is.
Oh, really?
They listen to me better when I wear that shirt.
Up right into the center, yeah, yeah.
We have cameras, so, so we want people to see you. Please come up. Hi. Oh, congratulations. We're so excited for you and, and really, really proud of all of you. So thank you for that. I want you to stand right around here and a few shake and I want you to face that camera.
Yeah, those little things there.
I can't see it, but it's on.
I want everybody to see you. We all want everybody to see you. And, um, maybe we could go around and you could say what your names are.
So then, Chief.
Jody, Serena.
It's Hayley, Allison.
Hello, Vicki.
And Claire.
Ashley Hall.
Grace DeMell.
Two of Burkharts. And, uh, missing players are Bryce Winters, Chantel Gammie, Cara Brody, Jamie Horne, Sarah Horning, Cheyenne Michaelcheck, um, Sophia Arcuri, Michaela Anderson, Anna Melby, um, and assistant coach Ruben Goodrin.
Mimi.
Um, Demi Walkers and Shane Tengodo.
Wow.
I'd just love to say that on behalf of city council and the whole community that we were really excited and really proud about the news. I saw, I, I follow, uh, what's happening. I followed on Facebook and I think it was Bob Hall who posted first one. And so I was, I, I along with everybody else is really, really happy. And I know that this is a bit bittersweet for all of you. How many, you, all of you have played for at least five years with, and, and all of you are graduating? Most of you are graduating this year, so this is.
I just have a four year.
Yeah, and so, so this, this is a hugely important thing. So I, I'd just also like to invite, uh, Chief Burkhart up here to say a couple of words to, to say, talk a little bit about your team.
Yeah, no, we've, uh, you know, we've been together, uh, five years now. We started, uh, there was another coach at fifteen, but at fourteen, we started together. And, uh, you know, our first year, uh, we were fourteen, uh, we went out of provincials. We made provincials every year that we were together as a group since fourteen. And, uh, we, uh, became eighth of eight teams in Castle, in, uh, where were we? At Chillicothe, right? We, uh, we lost one nothing. We lost one nothing. We tied the provincial championship, won all, and we lost one nothing. We had a tremendous tournament, but, uh, we just, uh, couldn't, uh, couldn't score as many goals as we needed. And then we got, we got six, next, no, we got a gold, we got silver, and we got a gold. So we ended with a real, uh, real bang. And these girls have worked real hard and they're, uh, the best part, one of their good buddies, uh, some of them are going on to play soccer, uh, elsewhere. But, uh, so play here and play wherever they go. And, uh, I know one of my biggest, biggest confessions as a group is that, I, I know two years ago, we had fifteen of our fifteen. We had actually only fourteen girls on our team the year before, but one had gone away to Europe. But that, that year, fifteen during the winter, played soccer during the winter, just because they loved to play. They got together as, as girls on the team and they just loved to play the game. Boy, you're gonna take on big plates. It's like camoops and we played, we beat camoops in the final and they'll be in camoops. So they had their crew there, the TV cameras, everything else. And we'd be pent ticked. And these are big clubs, you know?
We're not a big club. We're a, we're a smallish club and, uh, but we have a lot of talent here and a lot of, you know, with white caps, it really helps.
So it's, uh, it's been a good stretch. It's thirteen years for me, you know? I coached Julie's, uh, older sister for, uh, six years, I think, as well. And hosting and everything else. It's interesting that I never played game soccer in my life. I haven't scored much soccer, but, but when they were six and now I'm a fan, I just, when the white caps guys see me, they run because they're like, how about this formation? I think we should be doing this play, you know?
Well, it's, it's fabulous. It's great coaching and great, and, and congratulations to all the parents too. It takes huge commitment to support your children through sports and then make sure they get to practices, buy the gear, travel with them and, and it's, it's great. So I, I really appreciate that you came tonight, or we do, and that, and we know that not everybody could come because it's summer holidays. So I said, when I, when I, when I contacted the chief, I said, gee, do you think that a few people could come? And he said, yeah, I think so. So I want, what I'd like to do is, Chief, could maybe you and I could stand behind and maybe they get, I want you to hold that trophy up and let's get a picture. I'll swoop, yeah.
Should we like get it down?
Yeah.
That's what we're doing? I don't know.
No, 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 don't worry about it.
We'll sneak in between, not surprised.
That's good.
You should hold that up.
There you go. Look in here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very exciting.
I don't know if our first item on the agenda will have this, can keep up this ad.
Speaking of the agenda, could I have someone move adoption of the agenda for tonight? Thank you, councillor Purcell, seconded by councillor Sherbo. We'll just give staff a minute. Did you hear that? It was, um, councillor Purcell and Sherbo for, um, adoption of the agenda. Uh, do I have a mover for the adoption of last meeting minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Kozak, and seconded by councillor Morrison. Uh, next on our agenda is the cultural presentation.
I don't see it.
I don't see it.
It either.
Oh, I can look in the hallway.
Go have a look.
Oh, I was thinking.
They played at our rotary meeting on Friday, so maybe they got worn out. Or sang at our rotary meeting.
Nope. Okay, so we may come back to that if they show up. Uh, so right now, I'd like to open the floor for public participation. City council welcomes comments from the public on issues it is dealing with or on issues of interest to the public. Before speaking, please identify yourself, stating your name and place of residence and the issue you are bringing forward. Please limit your questions and or comments to a maximum of five minutes. Council will not make any decisions at this meeting about the issue you raise, but may refer the item to staff for follow-up. Topics raised in this session should be of broad public interest. Complaints of a personal nature will be dealt with by staff through the city's established complaints process. Thank you for taking the time to participate in this city council meeting. Do I have anyone wishing to present this evening?
That isn't on the agenda.
Public participation?
Yeah, that's not on the agenda.
Oh, that is not on the agenda, yes. Someone who would like to participate who isn't already scheduled as a delegation. Seeing none, we'll move on to our next agenda item. Our first delegation, and we'd like to welcome Mr. Rameesh Shah from B C Assessment.
Thank you very much. Uh, so I have a brief PowerPoint, uh, presentation to present. And, um, it has a little bit of history of assessments in B C and talks a little bit about some of the details of assessments regarding, um, classification, that type of thing. Thank you. And, uh, then I'll have time at the end for some questions as well, so. The presentation, I don't know if you can get it up on.
Sorry, we've got some technical difficulty happening here.
If you prefer to sit, you can't, you can't sit, so.
You know what? I'm okay standing. That should be fine. Perfect.
Don't know why it's not maximized.
We have it on our computers.
Oh, you do as well? Okay, that's great. Um, so I'll just start off with, um, just a brief outline, so, um, who we are as B C Assessment, what we do, and some of the role highlights, as well as some time for some question and answers. So B C Assessment was established in nineteen seventy-four. Our enabling legislation is the Assessment Authority Act, and that guides the way that we complete our work. We're a provincial crown corporation and we're independent of taxing authorities, which is a little bit different from other assessment organizations within North America that are sometimes related to the municipalities that they serve. And we have six geographic regions. We used to have ten. Uh, we have fifteen offices throughout the province and almost seven hundred full-time employees. Our head office is in Victoria, although, uh, we have a large office in Vancouver as well that serves the lower mainland. Uh, our assessment role that we produce is an annual assessment role. So we present, um, an assessment role that reflects the market value each year. Uh, so it changes annually. This is also different from what some other assessment organizations do. Our, um, assessment role provides values for over two million properties and the total value on the provincial role is one point eight trillion dollars. And another important thing that we do is we identify ownership and we apply classification and exemptions. Uh, this is important for a few reasons, but I know, deal with some of them later on. And in order, the work that we do allows, um, taxing jurisdiction throughout B C to raise over seven and a half billion dollars to fund the, um, operations that they need to do to provide services for their citizens. And, um, the assessment role that we produce is, um, unique in that it's open to, um, challenge. People can appeal to, um, the property assessment review panels if they feel that their property value is incorrect. Um, we also use those property assessment review panels to correct things like ownership, that transfers have occurred after we close the role. And, um, it's, uh, it's a, it's a system that provides an opportunity for people to, uh, challenge their assessments throughout the year if they feel they're incorrect. I'll touch on that just a little bit more later on. So there's a couple of important dates for B C Assessment. The first one is July first and, um, July first is a date that we'll adjust sales to or we'll adjust valuations to in the process of an appeal. But, uh, it's, we look at the valuation, what's your home worth as of July first every single year? Um, so in a upward moving market, um, the value that we look at in terms of July first, when you get your assessment notice in January, the value may have already increased dramatically since July first. In some cases, also values are decreasing. The, the opposite is true. And then you pay your taxes the following July. So, uh, by the time you pay your taxes, in some cases, the value that you're seeing on your assessment notice that your taxes are based on might be, um, somewhat either, uh, might be behind the times. Uh, but we have the ability to change that year over year over year. Uh, the second date that's very important for us is October thirty-first. So if you're building a house, for instance, and you've got a vacant lot on Joe, October thirty-first, that's what will reflect on the assessment role. If you have a house that's half complete, that's what we would reflect on the cl- on the assessment role for the following year. If it's a hundred percent complete, that's what we would reflect. So things like demolitions or new construction, that October thirty-first date is also very important. Also rezoning as well. Uh, sometimes people rezone from residential to commercial, um, zoning. And we would reflect that and the appropriate classification of the property the following year. Um, I said we had two important dates. There's a few other dates that are also, uh, critical. So on December thirty-first, we nail out the assessment notices. A lot of people nowadays don't actually wait for their assessment notice to come. They'll take a look at, um, our online valuation. And, uh, it used to be called E-Value B C. Now it's called Assessment Search. And they'll look up the value of their home, uh, on basically January first. Uh, January thirty-first is the deadline to file an appeal to the Property Assessment Review Panel if you think there's an error or the value is incorrect on your property. And those Property Assessment Review Panels sit for a month and a half. So they sit for the entire month of February and the first half of March. If you're a property owner and you've appealed to the Property Assessment Review Panel and you're not satisfied with the result of your appeal at that first stage, first stage, there isn't, uh, there is no charge. Uh, if you feel your value is incorrect, you can appeal it without paying a fee. If you still don't feel that, uh, the review panel decision that you received was correct, you can appeal to the Property Assessment Appeal Board. You have to do so by April thirtieth each year, and there is a fee of thirty dollars to do so. And, uh, we don't see a lot of appeals in our region. Generally, uh, appeals for properties throughout B C are less than one and a half percent of the properties, uh, on average, on a given year. So again, we've got July fir- first evaluation date, October thirty-first, the physical condition date. And November thirtieth is the last day that we sort of look at land titles, uh, for ownership tran- changes. They'll be reflected on the, on the assessment notice. If you sell your property on December twelfth or fifteenth, we, we would correct that ownership through PARP. Uh, we can do that as well. And, uh, December thirty-first is liability for taxation. So if your home is substantially destroyed, I'll say unfortunately, it happens sometimes between, uh, when we close the role at the end of, uh, November and, uh, December thirty-first, we can reflect that on the assessment, on the, uh, we'll correct that through the Property Assessment Review Panel period. This is just a number of occurrences for, um, properties in various classes. So there's the residential class, uh, which is most of the properties in Nelson. Uh, there's a few utility properties. There's a couple of supportive housing properties, class three supportive housing. Uh, if you are on a designated list of properties that get class three, you have a value of one dollar on the land and one dollar on the buildings. That's a legislated value. Uh, there's only four of them in Nelson at the moment. Light industry, uh, there's not a lot of those properties, but business and other is probably the next largest property. So, um, by looking at the various classifications, you can apply a tax rate, uh, for each one of those different classifications as you see fit. And that gives you flexibility when, uh, when raising revenue to fund your operations. Uh, there's no farm properties in town and there's no managed forests or major industry. Uh, that's the, this is the total value of those properties. So those four thousand properties have a total value of, uh, one point five billion dollars, uh, in town here. And the, sorry, I think it was four hundred and, or, uh, five hundred and eighty-five commercial properties have a total value of two hundred and fifty-five million dollars. So those are the two largest, uh, areas of, uh, of value, followed closely by utilities. There's only forty-five, but they have a value of one hundred and seven million, or billion dollars. And, or one hundred and seven million dollars. Sorry about that.
We want the billion.
Uh, there's also a number of recreation nonprofits. Some of those are exempt, uh, but, uh, those are, um, properties like Parkline, for instance, is class eight. Also churches, um, and churches are statutorily exempt from taxation. And generally, there's a permissive exemption also for the land, so. So I just briefly touched on exemptions from taxation there. So there's some properties that are exempted from taxation statutorily. Uh, municipally owned properties, for instance, aren't taxed. Um, and churches are another example that we hear about a lot of the time. So, uh, a church building and the land, the footprint beneath the church is exempted by statute. Um, and the area surrounding the church requires a permissive exemption. And, uh, that's allowed through the community charter and, uh, any new permissive exemption needs to be passed by October thirty-first. Uh, again, that October thirty-first date is very important for a number of reasons. This is another one of them. And, uh, you have to identify the purpose of why you're giving the permissive exemption. There's various different reasons why you can, uh, provide an exemption and that sort of needs to be identified. And you can't provide assistance to a business, um, so you can't exist, uh, exempt a, a commercial operator. Um, I'm just gonna talk about sort of the market in, uh, in Nelson over the next few slides. And, um, this is a, a count of the active listings in the past four years. You'll notice sort of a downward trend with a spike each July essentially, or each summer. There's generally a lot of properties that get listed in the summer months. But what we've seen over the past few years, that's in the past four years, is a significant downward trend in the number of listings. And, um, I don't see that that's really gonna change much in the future, um, unless there's some kind of a significant change. Right now, when I looked this afternoon, I think there was about thirty-four single-family homes listed for sale in Nelson at the moment. Um, and that number has been kind of steady. Earlier this year, it was down to, I, I'm gonna say eleven or fifteen in January. And, you know, you've got a ten, a town of ten thousand people and eleven homes for sale. Uh, that leads to, um, a decrease in inventory available. So, um, that's, again, the past four years. And what this is a measure of is, you know, the homes that are on the market right now, based on the amount of time that it takes to sell a home, how many months of inventory do you have? And this is a very clear indication that there's been less than five months of inventory for the last several years. Uh, so homes sell fairly quickly, um, and, uh, there, I mean, sometimes you see ads in the paper where you've got a Realtor say, asking for listings. That's not uncommon, I would say, where, uh, they're actively seeking listings. The, the, a decrease in sales and a decrease in listings has a spillover effect in a couple of cases. You know, uh, mortgage brokers, for instance, NoRe publics, uh, Realtors. There's less inventory available to purchase. There's less inventory available to sell. There's less transactions. Uh, there's a spillover effect of that. The decrease in the number of listings is basically translates into a upward trend in pricing. Um, you get the other chances, I mean, I hear about it anecdotally a lot. I've experienced it myself. My colleagues have experienced it themselves, where you have multiple offers on the same house. Because there just isn't that much available, um, what that ends up doing is it has an increase in the, uh, sale price at the end of the day because people will try and, um, outbid each other or have, um, offers that have things like no, um, subjects. Uh, I, it's not as bad here, I would say, as some other locations around B C. But, um, I have heard a lot of, of offers that, um, went through without any inspection, without any conditions. You know, if you need to sell your house in order to purchase another house, you're probably gonna get beat out by somebody else who doesn't have that subject in their property, um, or in their offer. So, um, kind of a dramatic change, and that's from two thousand and thirteen to this year. You know, where the median home price would have been maybe around three hundred thousand. Now generally, properties are selling, the median price is over four hundred thousand. Um, this year, I suspect it will be increasing again, and that's sort of the market that we see. The, the, what you would get for three hundred thousand dollars now is quite a bit different from what you would get for three hundred thousand dollars five years ago. These are just a few properties. So that's, uh, a property that sold almost fifty thousand dollars over ask. That property sold fifty-one thousand dollars over ask. This is nineteen days on the market. Uh, the other one was twenty-five, I believe. This is thirty-five thousand dollars over ask, just over a month on the market. Um, this is twenty-seven thousand dollars over ask, um, twenty days on the market. And when it, when it has twenty days or twenty-one days on the market, um, a lot of these properties sold much sooner than that, is my understanding. And that, uh, you, they don't actually get removed from MLS, uh, in time. Like, I mean, some of these properties might have sold the first day that they were on the market or second day. It just took a while to get the paperwork through. So that, that one was a hundred percent of the asking price, seven days on the market. And it sold again, uh, one month later for, um, eleven thousand or almost twelve thousand dollars over ask and fifty-one thousand dollars over the previous sale price of a month prior. I, I don't know why. Uh, I mean, it's, it's in a price point at three hundred and thirty thousand dollars there. That's affordable to a lot of people. Um, I would suspect that there was probably, again, multiple offers on that property. That's another property that's about thirteen thousand dollars over ask, but seventeen days on the market. Thirty-two thousand dollars over ask, thirteen days on the market. I mean, these are very, very short periods of time that these properties are on the market. Generally, a lot of them, I guess, would probably have multiple offers on them. And some of the people that were successful on some of those might have been outbid on previous homes. I know that's not uncommon these days where people are looking at a home, they get outbid, and they think that's not gonna happen to me next time. I'm gonna make sure my bid is competitive. And sometimes they offer more than they ask or their conditions are adjusted to reflect that. These are sort of the changes that we've put in place over the last several years. Uh, so when we were producing the two thousand and sixteen role, we were a fairly modest increase of about just under six percent. For the two thousand and seventeen role, we went up almost, well, almost ten percent. Similarly, for the two thousand and eighteen role. These are averages. Some neighborhoods have gone up more than others. I will say that, um, neighborhoods like Rosemont or Fairview aren't really distinguished by buyers anymore. And they'll pay almost the same amount of money regardless of where a home is. Whereas in previous years, they might have bid a little more for something in Uphill and a little less for something in Fairview or Rosemont. But that's kind of gone now and people will just buy anything that they can get, um, i- if they're in the market and they have the financing in place and they have the down payment in place. You know, where, where it's located in town isn't as important as the fact that they don't have to drive twenty or thirty minutes to get to work each day, so. Uh, the two thousand and nineteen role, I would suggest we're probably looking at north of ten percent in increases here, and that'll be across the board. Um, what that doesn't mean, you know, is that, you know, if you have a ten percent increase in values, uh, and this is again for residential, single family, um, because of the way that, you know, your classification is set up, you can adjust the tax rate. It doesn't mean that properties are gonna face a ten percent higher tax bill. The increase in value is, i- if your, if your value increases more than the average, so if the average increase is ten percent and yours goes up twelve percent, you might see a slight increase in your taxes. If you go up eight percent and the average increase in your town is ten percent, you might actually see a decrease in your taxes, even though your value has still gone up ten per- or eight percent, um, you know, you might have a, a net benefit. Uh, that being said, that doesn't transfer equally across the entire class because you have, this, this is residential, single family. Uh, you might have townhomes or apartments that are also in class one in the residential class that might move differently. And, uh, they're seeing that in the lower mainland right now. I spoke to some colleagues from Vancouver and townhouses and apartments are going up twenty or thirty percent. And single-family homes are basically flat or maybe going up five percent. So, uh, when you have a change in the class, y- you, you have to look at what the change is relative to the average change in the class. I went pretty quickly, but if there's anything you want me to talk to in a little bit more detail, I'm welcome to, happy to do so.
Yes, councillor Purcell.
Well, thank you for this. I, I found it very interesting to read in our agenda package. And I guess I'm just curious, from your perspective, having looked at other communities, how do we, how do we compare? What's, what, what, what can you tell from Nelson from looking at these numbers?
Um, you know, I, so I, I used to live in Abbotsford. I have friends that live and work in Abbotsford. And, um, you know, it's a, it used to be a bedroom community in the lower mainland. And if you had a house in, uh, in Vancouver and, uh, or you wanted to buy a house in Vancouver, the prices were going up. Well, you could move to, uh, an outlying community. It's very expensive in those outlying communities now. And similar, like, I mean. And similarly, I mean, I mean, six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars for a lot to build a home in. Expensive. So here, you know, you've got a place where if you can buy a home, an average type of home for four hundred thousand dollars, it's something that a two-income family can kind of afford. And if you want to spend eight hundred or nine hundred or over a million dollars, there's, there's properties that you can buy in this area as well and do so. But, you know, it's not, I mean, it has gotten more expensive. Depending on what you have in terms of the down payment and job opportunities, it's still possible to buy a home. If you want to live somewhere more rural and spend less money, you can do so. There's a lot of those opportunities around in the, in the neighboring communities. There's also, you know, condo options. I know that the Nelson Commons sold fairly well when it was purchased. I think there was a few buyers there that maybe sold their single-family homes in Nelson and have either moved into a condo living because it's a little bit easier. You don't have to deal with snow clearing, for instance, or home maintenance. And it gives you a little bit more flexibility there. But, you know, from the perspective of anywhere and coming from outs, from somewhere else in the province, it's not an incredibly expensive place, although it's been increasing in value or in price over the last few years. I'd say it's probably gone up, you know, twenty or thirty percent in the last three years, which is a significant increase, but some places have seen that in one year.
And in terms of like, you know, business, like numbers of properties, numbers of occurrences, you have the residential, the business and other. Is, is any of that, you know, unique or, or interesting? Or is that kind of par for the course, that percentage of, of business slash other to residential or utilities?
I think the proportions are probably pretty similar. The one thing that sort of strikes me is that Nelson is sort of geographically constrained, like a lot of places where you've got mountains, you've got the lake, you've got the municipal boundaries. So there's not the ability, there isn't a huge amount of undeveloped land within city limits that you can sort of build brand-new, single-family homes on. And eventually, I think you'll be looking at more density and you'll be looking at properties that have secondary suites on them or more than one. I mean, there's, there's a property that I was driving by the other day where, you know, they're building two duplex units on a single lot. And, you know, that type of thing allows four dwelling units on a property that previously maybe had one. That, that specific site is a little unique because it's a corner unit or a corner lot. They paid significantly more than what we thought, you know, a single-family lot would be worth. But when you look at it in terms of what they were able to build, it was fine for them and it worked for their purposes, so.
Ramish, maybe just, do you want to explain how the assessment works, particularly between a commercial building and a residential building?
Sure. So the, the first thing that we do when we're producing an assessment role is we provide a value. And then we apply a classification based on how the property is being used. So you might have a single-family home. There's a few of those in town where the single-family home is being used for commercial purposes. You know, you might have a doctor's office or an accounting office or something like that. So we'll look at what's the value of that, of that property? And we'll apply a classification based on how the property is being used. And then we'll apply an exemption as well. In terms of how other commercial properties are valued, a large number of them are valued on the income approach. So in terms of what kind of rent can you get? What are your typical expenses as a landlord? And what are, what kind of return on the air investment are people generally seeking in that area? So what we've seen over the last few years is maybe rents may have been trending up slightly, but fairly, rents don't generally move that much. So what you see, when you see someone paying more for a commercial property than they did the year before, is they're willing to accept a little bit less of a return on their income. So where people might have expected a, this gets a bit technical, but a nine percent return on their investment in previous years, which reflects the risk of a, of a given property in that location, the chance that you might have some vacancies some years. Now they're willing to accept a six percent return on their investment. And I will say that there's very few properties in other parts of B C where you can get a six percent return on your investment. Capitalization rates, which is a measure of what the expected return on, on a commercial property is, have been dropping throughout the province significantly. There's the same way that there's not very many houses for sale here at the moment. There are very few commercial properties available to buy in the lower mainland. People are just not willing to sell their commercial property because they can't get something similar unless they go further and further out. So we do see some people who buy commercial properties here that are not from the local area. There's still a lot of commercial property that's bought by people that live in the, in the local area. Maybe they're using it for their own purposes. But, you know, there are people who have the funds available to buy an investment property, hold it for ten or fifteen or twenty years and then sell it eventually. And that's a generational thing that we see as well, too.
I know that property taxes, the valuation process changes in different places. I'm aware of one place where property tax is based on the purchase price and it remains the same until it's repurchased at a new price. And I'm wondering, who decides on the valuation process? Is that B C Assessment or is it the provincial government?
So our, everything about how we do our work comes from our enabling legislation. So the Assessment Authority Act directs us how to provide values. How, and it directs us to value properties at market value each year. So there are some assessments organizations throughout Canada or throughout North America that produce an assessment role every four years. So your assessment might stay the same for three or four years and then boom, you'd see a change relative, relative to the previous assessed value. There is also places like the state of California, for instance, where the assessment doesn't change until the property sells. From looking at it and reading about it, that's caused some problems in, in terms of raising revenue. You might have an area where the values don't change. And if you go into this area and purchase a home, you have an assessment that's significantly higher than your neighbors. You're consuming the same services. You are in the same location. It's, in, I mean, in my mind, it's not an ideal way of, of producing an assessment role. But the one thing that an annual assessment role allows is again, the chance for people to have their properties reviewed through a third-party panel. So the Property Assessment Review Panel is independent of B C Assessment. They're, they're, they are appointed by our ministry and they sit independent of B C Assessment. They hear evidence from homeowners for why their value should be different. Sometimes people ask for increases in their assessments. Sometimes people ask for decreases in their assessments. They ask for evidence in support of that and they make a decision right there that day, generally. And then if they don't agree with that decision, they have a further level of appeal. There's jurisdictions like Calgary, for instance, they only have one level of appeal. And it's quite formal. There's a significant cost to it. And the Property Assessment Review Panels that we have are a little bit less formal. I feel that they're less intimidating to property owners. And we've started to move towards teleconference panels as well, which has helped people sort of in rural areas, people who might, you know, live in Calgary but have a home in Nelson. They can still attend the panel and provide evidence for why their value should be different without having to take two or three days out of their time to travel and stay in town just to have an assessment appeal heard. So, you know, I, I feel our, our system is very robust and allows for oversight and third-party review of it. So it, it seems to work quite well, even though there's all these flaws.
I just want to, you know, as, as council knows, the, you know, council looks at how much additional tax you need. It's what that assessment does is how you spread it over. As long as everybody's on the same, have been assessed the same way, then it, then it's equitable. So just, you know, because things went, as Ramish said, went up ten percent. If we need a tax increase of two percent and we reduce our rate to get that real two percent, we don't, we never, you know, because those values have gone up.
Could you give me your microphone, please?
All we do is actually reduce the, the rate. So if you look at our, tracking our rate over the last ten years, you'll see it. I think when I started, it was maybe fourteen or something. It's half of that or less than half of what it was ten years ago.
And Kevin touches on another important point that I forgot to mention as well, too. So after the review panels sit and complete their hearings, we provide to you what's called the revised role. And that incorporates any changes. So at, on January first, you'll receive a copy of, of the assessment role. There could be changes through PARP. There could be demolitions that have occurred that we didn't know about and/or subdivisions that have occurred and changed the value. And the revised role is essentially what you would use to sort of estimate the revenue that you're going to be able to generate in July when property owners pay their taxes. Another important point is what's called non-market change. So, you know, when I talk about prices increasing by ten percent year over year for single-family homes, that's market movement. Non-market change is new construction, essentially, subdivisions, that type of thing. Changes in classification are also non-market change. So when the Nelson Commons, for instance, was being built, that was a large amount of new tax revenue that was available to the city of Nelson to increase revenue without having to change the taxes on the other property owners in, in Nelson. So non-market change is, is very important. I know it's, it's something that I, I think Colin looks at very closely each year because it represents an additional source of revenue without increasing taxes on property owners. So the more non-market change you can get, the better. And I, I think any new construction helps that.
Seeing no more questions, I'd like to say thank you very much for an interesting presentation.
Thank you, thank you very much. And if you have any questions or you want any follow-up, my email's on the last slide of that presentation. My phone number's on there as well and available anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next delegation, we have three presentations regarding permissive tax exemptions. Good timing. First up is the Civic Theater. Oh, hi, come on forward.
Okay. Does that work? That works. Good evening. I'm pleased to be here on behalf of the Nelson Civic Theater Society. And I begin with thanks to the city for continuing to offer the Permissive Tax Exemption Program. As a charitable organization, Nelson Civic Theater Society focuses one hundred percent of its time, programs and services on activities benefiting the community. We cater to our community's cultural interests by showing up to three nights of alternative content each week, like art on screen, documentaries and independent films. We initiate crowdsourced programming. We bring titles and organize alternative screenings to accommodate school curriculum and interest. And we work with local organizations to host fundraising and education-centered events. We offer space rentals and screen advertising to community groups and offer a nonprofit discount on both. We program free learning and meeting opportunities like seminars and live streaming. Examples are the recent Intelligent Community Forum webinars in partnership with the city of Nelson, featuring Community Futures Andrea Wilkie in the B C-wide broadcast. Also, the Disruptive Innovation Festival sessions on agricultural innovation and the circular economy. We offer free community celebrations like our Home for the Holidays Winter Open House and the Zombie Walk, live screening of the Oscars and National Canadian Film Day screenings. We've also taken the lead in the last three years in establishing B C Culture Days in our region, for which Nelson has placed seventh and eighth in communities of fifty thousand or less in all of Canada for the number of activities that have taken place during the celebration. And we've devoted staff time to reaching this goal for the region in partnership with Nelson Cootney Lake Tourism and Nelson and District Arts Council and have taken the lead in securing the provincial launch event this coming September here in Nelson. We partner with local organizations to foster discourse on key topics of local interest. Recent free events include the Kalan Hospice Society's liminal learning lab and the Nelson and District Arts Council's Rural Artists Support Weekend. Since May of sixteen, we've been growing our commitment to the region's screen-based industry workers. Beginning with the establishment of monthly meetups and quarterly open screenings at the Civic Theater and the launch of CootneyFilm.com, we have continued to grow our Facebook Cootney Screen-Based Industry Workers Group, which is now at more than two hundred and seventy members. In September of seventeen, we staged our inaugural film festival event entitled Kinesis, a celebration of Cootney film, bringing thirty-nine film pieces by Cootney filmmakers to our screen, a diverse series of professional development sessions and panel discussions, and a one-day open space session to consider opportunities for the future of this local sector. Kinesis also debuted Fomenting Awesome, the Civic's own signature beer ad competition, featuring pieces about local breweries. This event is being planned again for this fall, expanding its invitations to craft breweries and filmmakers in the East and West Cootneys. We offered our first developmental residency opportunity to award-winning local filmmaker Jonathan Robinson in March of eighteen. Jonathan used our auditorium stage and lighting to produce a new music video. Residencies will be part of our programming plan going forward and are a way for us to help artists as they develop their work. We are committed to local youth through three central activities. First, entry-level workplace training and employment to local youth through our concession and box office. Two, developing and encouraging the screen-based youth projects. And three, supplementing and supporting other youth programs, education and organizations in our region, like recent projects with L V Rogers, Wildflyer School and the Nelson and District Youth Center. And finally, we offer opportunities for senior engagement, such as volunteer ushering and patron services roles. We offer the weekly Films with Friends pre-movie coffee meetup geared towards welcoming people who don't come to movies because they don't want to attend alone. The Civic Theater's programs and services support four out of five of the city of Nelson's Path to Twenty-Fourteen Sustainability Principles and Directions and five of the ten focus areas. And we also support points under each of the four goals of this council's strategic plan for fifteen through eighteen. Thank you for considering our request for a permissive tax exemption renewal. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Council?
Thanks very much. You may know we won't be making decisions this evening, but no, I know that. Thank you for your presentation.
Next up is Nelson Soccer. Welcome.
My name is Svetta Tishma. I'm Nelson Soccer Association Executive Director. I'll start with our mission statement. The Nelson Soccer Association is a nonprofit community soccer association whose mission is to provide soccer players, is to provide soccer players, coaches, officials and parents in the Nelson area with programs and opportunities to learn, play and develop, regardless of age, gender and ability. The association aims to ensure that these opportunities are granted in a safe, fun and supportive manner while encouraging fair play and development in the sport of soccer. So our little history, we have been called Nelson Youth Soccer for thirty-nine years. And on our last A G M last year in October, to better reflect what we actually do, since we involved adult soccer in our organization, we changed our name to Nelson Soccer Association. We are also a longstanding member with B C Soccer and are working currently on getting a charter status with B C Soccer. It's very hard when we're in further, from the mainland and Vancouver area to be on their radar. So this will help us if we become a charter member for them to actually get more access to more development of soccer in the area. We are the largest sport organization in the area. We have around fifteen hundred participants. So if you calculate Nelson population, that's almost ten percent of Nelson population plays soccer. So we also support, supply soccer for four-year-olds and up. We even have senior, senior programs in indoor facility, which is called non-contact soccer. So some of you have kids in soccer or some of you played soccer or play soccer currently. So some of you have kids into soccer or some of you played soccer or play soccer currently. So we have two major programs. It's, soccer is played all year round, which is really good for continuity of development. We have outdoor program which runs April to end of September with a break in the summer. And we have indoor program which runs mid-October to mid-March. We also, and indoor, we provide rentals for other groups, other sport groups as well. We have very close relation with city of Nelson. We are in last year of five-year term of paying off our loan for a lease of indoor facility and soccer. One of our strengths has been exactly that, stability and continuity of the steady numbers through all, all these years that we have run our programs. We also hold tournaments, one in the winter, one in the summer, sorry, in the spring, which is also contributing to tourism in the city and helping the local businesses. Just wanna say it's hard to find anyone in our community that almost doesn't have any connection with the soccer, maybe not playing, but through volunteering, helping. We have a really good, Colin knows, we have a really good refereeing system. So we develop younger referees. It's really good for leadership skills later on in life. I just wanna say it takes little help from all sides to run a successful organization. And I wanna thank you, counsel, for hearing our presentation.
Thanks very much. Any questions? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
And finally, under this section is Glacier Gymnastics.
Good evening. I'm Mike Finley. I'm on the board of the gymnastics club. Been here a couple times, talked to you about what we're doing there. As you know, we're in the Civic Centre, one of your buildings, and we're asking for some help with the taxes. We entered into our new lease with you two years ago now. We, we had been under the, the tax exemption, we appreciate that, thank you. We're asking for that to continue. We, with the new lease, we had to increase our fees fairly substantially last year. We didn't notice a drop, we did notice a little bit different demographic. But we're doing the best we can to keep it open to as many kids as possible. As part of that, we're in the midst of a, to us, a fairly substantial renovation in the building. I don't know if you guys have seen what we're doing there, but we've moved the office from down on the gym floor up into the mezzanine area. It's almost active now, just waiting for some wiring to get finished in there. We've started renovating the bathrooms. The men's bathroom was a massive space. As you know, we're predominantly a female organization, so we're getting rid of some of that space and hoping to create a big multipurpose room up there, which will then allow us to have a lot more kids come through the doors by just having that one more space up there. We're about a third of the way to halfway now. Getting our funding for that through C I P funding and some other community grants that we've, we're able to get up. So we're looking at, just trying to keep increasing capacity, keep bringing more kids in. We have about 1,000 participants yearly there, there now. You know, it goes from weekly classes, camps, drop-ins, birthday parties, school groups. You know, like I say, we're, a lot of the young girls that come through our doors, it's a really safe place for them to be. We also host a couple regional meets every year. Of course, I think most of you guys have probably been to our crazy year-end show that we do every year, too. So it's a real amazing show of some of the talent we have in this, in this town. So thank you for your time and we hope you will, again, give us a permissive tax exemption. Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, questions?
Seeing no questions, thank you very much. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the presentation on lighting strategy. Hi Natalie.
Hi. So I'm here tonight just to give council an update on the downtown lighting. I don't know if I'd call it a strategy necessarily, but we've recently hired a consultant to help us select new downtown streetlights, decorative lighting that'll be on all year, as well as holiday lighting. The, so just a little bit of background information, the current downtown streetlights are at their end of life and they need to be replaced. The current street standards have been expensive and timely to replace, as well as difficult to maintain. And so we are in the process of researching new streetlights that would enhance and complement the historic downtown, reduce operational and maintenance costs, be energy efficient and improve lighting conditions. The Downtown Urban Design Strategy recommends that three different streetlights be selected. Heritage style along Baker Street and Ward Street, a transition style for Victoria Street and Cross Streets, and a contemporary style for Vernon Street. We are also proposing to form a selection committee to help us choose the new streetlights. So it could include members from the Cultural Development Committee, the business community Nelson Hydro, as well as maybe a member from the public. We're also gonna do some consultation with the public and the business community to help us choose a preferred light styles. Our vision is that perhaps there'll be three different lights from each category on the website and residents and the business community can select their favorite light and then we'll move forward with an R F P process. It's anticipated that the new lights will be installed in 2019. The selection committee will also help us choose new decorative and holiday lighting for downtown. The Downtown Urban Design Strategy recommended that we install catenary lighting at Ward and Baker Street or like the same lighting that's at Hall Street, similar to that. And then for holiday lighting, perhaps wrapping the trees downtown in lights and the light standards. And then we're hoping to have that installed by this year.
That's it. Okay. Any questions for Natalie? Yes, Mayor Kozak?
Thank you for your report. I'm, I'm, I have a couple of questions. So first a comment, I'm really disappointed that Counselor Adams wasn't here tonight to hear your report because he specifically requested it, but I know that he's read his agenda and he'll be really happy to hear about the Christmas lighting especially. I'm really glad to hear that we're going to be addressing to the, the streetlights because we, as we reported last year, they are at end of life and it's important that we have appropriate, safe lighting as well. When, and Mr. McClure, when, when will we expect a budget around some of this? Like what, it'll be, it'll come with the committee's recommendations? Or have you been, have you been part of this discussion?
Well, Your Worship, yes, we had a slight conversation. Part of it was at this point in time with having the new consultant looking at that was one of the questions that we did ask was, do we know what kind of value? What are we looking at as far as trying to fund? We have a couple of sources, one that we've used in the past, which is the Spurway Trust, which allows for some festival lighting funding. It's not a lot of money. And what we have seen is that in undertaking this, we will need to be careful in understanding what is the best value and how do we continue to keep it up? Because that's certainly what we saw with the last set of lightings was, it was great that a volunteer group had helped us out, but once that volunteer group doesn't, isn't able to maybe to continue on, then that's really where we get into challenges. So the other funding source that we have available going into the future will be from the Downtown Waterfront Reserve. Of course, there's other, you know, pressures on that reserve, it will be over time, but that would be a place that would make a common, would make sense for us to be able to draw from. And but part of it is to try to find out what exactly are we looking at? And, and what will we be able to accomplish, you know, for Christmas this year?
Thank you.
But in terms of the street, regular street lighting, we have budgeted for that.
That's correct.
As a multi-year.
That is correct, on the street light as well, yeah. Yes, we have that.
So it's the holiday lighting that isn't in the current financial plan, but as far as the heritage fixed, or light standards, they are, but it's a multi-year plan. We don't have money in that budget to replace everything next year. So it's gonna, there's certainly, when we did those assessment on the various light standards now, there were some that were, you know, we had to remove and repair. And then there were others that were in a little bit better shape, but they're all, you know, they're just all starting to fail that, you know, the sand and the salt and the stuff on those, that metal, year after year has deteriorated that. The other bit of a challenge is, I think, I know from talking to Nelson Hydro, they feel the placement of those lights are too close to the road, which creates more wear on those lights and more impact we get. You know, if they get hit more, they get more snow on them, they get. So ideally, they would pull that back. That's, can't happen until we actually start to replace infrastructure in the downtown. When that happens, I think you'll see those placed slightly differently. So that will be something that will have to be taken into account. I assume they will, hopefully, you know, we can figure out a strategy of how you can install those with the ability to possibly move those as we have to replace sidewalks, pavement, et ceteras, as we have to replace that infrastructure.
Thank you.
And if I could add to that, we, we have talked to the consultant about that. And so they are going to fit the new lights to where they are right now on their current bolt, but also give us an ideal layout for in the future. So if we do upgrades, the lights can be moved, so.
There was just one, one other thing regarding lighting and decorative lighting. When I, we, we attended a conference in Halifax recently, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. One of the things that council likes to do on these conferences when we visit other cities is to take tours that are provided to see what, what other communities are doing and, and how things work. So I took their, they've done a downtown revitalization. And one of the things that I noted, took note of was what they did for lighting with trees. And they, they of course did it all in terms of providing proper infrastructure so that the trees can be watered properly and, and they're not, there's no root structures that are exposed on top of the sidewalks, but as well, they had lighting that came from underneath the tree and up. And one of the things that I recall happening, this is, I've been on council a while now, and we replaced the tree lights. There used to be beautiful tree lights up Ward Street. And the one year, I think we spent $10,000 replacing those lights and getting them working. And I think it was within, it was within a couple of weeks, they had been vandalized and lights had been torn down. So I think that's one of the biggest issues is you, you, we invest money into these things and we want to make sure that it's not vandalized or that where it's being invested, we kind of avoid those mistakes. But that's good news to hear that we're, we're gonna have a plan this year. Thank you.
Counselor Morrison?
Yeah, so I'm just, I mean, this probably goes without saying, but we're obviously looking at lighting that's going to be energy efficient, so that whether it's the lights for Christmas or the street lighting will all be LED, I would imagine, going forward. I realize it probably comes with a premium cost at the front end, but that, over time, that should be a better investment for the city.
That is one of our criterias, that they are LED, they're more energy efficient. And yeah, they, they have different temperature tones, too, so they can accommodate different looks. And so it, it does seem that that's the direction that we're gonna go is LED.
And then I'm just sort of thinking, just if I might have a secondary one, that you're also probably looking at programs, because I know that there's lots of programs out there in terms of, particularly with thinking about the Christmas lighting, that are offering grants and subsidies. And we are well-known in the city of Nelson for finding every, every rock to, to turn over. Hopefully, we don't throw any at the lights, but that, I'm sure that there's some programs out there that might be able to help us as well. And then I have just this crazy question, and maybe Natalie, you're not the person to ask, but when we buy these light standards, like for, like the street lighting as opposed to say the Christmas lighting, and then we have our beautiful flower baskets and things that, to the, when you buy those, do they, does that come all included? Are we always having to add something more to the streetlight that stands on the corner? Because I always think that, talking about the wear and tear on something, if, if we get this nice pole, but it doesn't come with the flower hanger, then, then we're immediately, you know, the, the more holes I screw into it or bolts I put into it, the, the sooner the deterioration can occur. So do they actually sell those things with all the, all the bits that you want? And I would assume that when we do the underground work, we'll eventually get the appropriate conduits of electricity so that these poles can be electrified as, as properly. So do they come like that? Do they come with like the basket hangers on them or the?
Yes, you can just order them like that, it's just add-ons. You want, and so that's something that we have looked at, that we do want flower baskets and it, and as well, like banners, arms for that, and that the poles have to be strong enough to accommodate all of that, because that can get quite heavy, especially the flower baskets. And so, yeah, it's just, it's just how you order them initially and they can come like that.
Okay, so they all come self-contained?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for answering the questions.
Counselor Sherbo?
Yeah, just Counselor Adams, one of his big thing is the large tree on Baker Street that I believe is in front of Phoenix Computers, and it's got old lights hanging down off of it. So his thing was he either wanted those replaced or removed, one of the two. So I don't know if that's in your ideas of what to do for Christmas lighting.
We'll definitely look into it. I didn't know the status of those lights, but they're old. Okay, so we'll look into it and figure something out, because that's kind of the Christmas tree. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sometimes we hear complaints about light pollution, so can you comment a little bit about that and what might be done to minimize it?
Yeah, so the O C P says that all light shall be downcast. So that does address light pollution. So the new streetlights will have to be downcast, even if they go with a similar style to what we have on Baker Street. You can just put a little cap on top so that the lights directed downwards. The only thing is decorative or holiday lights is, they're kind of all over the place. But in terms of our street lighting, it will all be downcast and so that will be dark sky compliant is another way to put that. That's right.
Thank you. Other questions?
I'm just, yeah, I don't know if you're not really dealing with crosswalks that are not well-lit. I know in other areas, so the new lighting, I think, is brighter or more visible light for people going across crosswalks.
The, the way that I understand it from the lighting consultant is that there is a standard to light the street. And so the new lights that they select will have to meet a certain light criteria. And so it'll light up the crosswalk hopefully better. I think that's the intention, is that the area is more well-lit with the new light standards. Because ours are from the 80s and so they're not quite as bright, I think, as they should be, so.
Thank you.
And I think Hall Street's a good example of that. And if you walk up Hall Street and with the downcast lighting and where it's placed, it definitely, it's much safer on those, those crosswalks.
Great. Thank you very much. And that brings us to the end of our agendas. There are no late items, looking for a resolution to adjourn. Thank you, Counselor Purcell. We are adjourned.
We go home?
Nicely done.